I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for May 24th, 2021. In just a moment, you will see the American flag on the screen and when you do, if you would please stand and as you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the role of the members?
Mr. Stites.
Present.
Ms. Hoppe.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Present.
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
And did I miss Rachel? Yes, I did. Rachel?
I'm here.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present.
Thank you very much and councillors, thank you for being here tonight. We have four proclamations tonight. Our first one is a proclamation designating June as a men's health month. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women. And whereas COVID-19 is destroying lives across the country, with the Centers for Disease Control reporting that males make more are more likely to die from this pandemic. And whereas encouraging safe behaviors, including social distancing, wearing masks, and being vaccinated will help stop the spread of COVID-19. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of healthy lifestyles and early detection of mild health problems will help reduce rates of mortality from disease. And whereas fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. And whereas the Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of preventive health practices. And whereas the Men's Health Month website has been established at www.menshealthmonth.org and features resources, proclamations, and information about awareness, events, and activities. And whereas Men's Health Months will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. Now therefore be it resolved, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as Men's Health Month and encourage our residents to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups, and pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts. And witness whereof in this 24th day of May 2021. Okay, that's our first one for Men's Health Month. Our next proclamation is in support is for Healthy Living Month. And we have two, we have Susan Anderson, our Recreation Manager, and Lynette Namba with Kaiser Permanente are going to join us to receive this proclamation and say a few words at its conclusion. So this is a proclamation for Healthy Active Living Month, June 2021. Whereas June is a great month to promote active living opportunities and educate residents about the importance of being physically active. And whereas Wheat Ridge has many convenient opportunities for residents to be active and form healthy habits. And whereas every person can take steps to improve health by increasing physical activity. And whereas the city passed a Healthy Eating Active Living Resolution in 2014, confirming the city's commitment to encourage and promote healthy opportunities. And whereas the city's Healthy Eating Active Living Committee, consisting of staff from Lutheran Medical Center, Kaiser Permanente, Jefferson County Public Health, Local Works, Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team, local businesses and residences, is focused on promoting healthy opportunities for Wheat Ridge residents and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as Healthy Active Living Month and encourage all community members and businesses of Wheat Ridge to join in this effort by participating in activities such as Lutheran's Heroes of Hope 5-10K Run Walk, or Local Works Live Local Cruiser Rides, and take advantage of all the recreational park and open space activities provided by our city. And witness whereof in this 24th day of May 2021. And I'd like to invite Susan Anderson and Lynette Namba. Let's see, I'm gonna go to my screen. Lynette, nice to see you here. And Susan, is Susan here?
I don't see Susan, Mayor, but Director of Parks and Rec is here.
Okay. Oh, Karen O'Donald. Karen, would you like to say a few words?
I think that I'll leave this to Lynette. I believe she's probably more of the expert on this subject.
All right. Well, Lynette, I'll turn the floor over to you then.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, City Council and staff. On behalf of Healthy Wheat Ridge, thank you for recognizing the importance of Healthy Living Month with the proclamation. Healthy Living encompasses many things, from walking and biking to eating nutritious meals, mindfulness to living tobacco-free. We support any and all efforts that inspire the Wheat Ridge community to focus on whole person and community health. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you know, and I know we have a lot of great recreational opportunities in the city. And I also want to point out that we do a lot of gardening in our city and that's a great exercise, too. I did a lot of it today and and I'll probably be feeling it a lot tomorrow. But you know, it's great to get out and particularly on a day like today and we have beautiful weather here. So get out there and take advantage of it. Okay, we have on our next proclamation is a proclamation in support of Safety Month. And I'm pleased to have Allison Scheck and Amber Garrett with our Administrative Services Division here to to receive that and and say a couple of things, I hope. But let me read it first. Okay, this is a proclamation, Wheat Ridge Safety Month, June 2021. Whereas National Safety Month focuses on reducing the leading causes of injury and death at work, on the roads, and in our homes and communities, and drawing attention to safe practices that will decrease the likelihood of accidents. And whereas, all community members deserve to live in communities that promote safe and healthy living environments. And whereas, safe communities require the cooperation of all levels of government, business, and industry employees, as well as the general public. And whereas, through the support and observance of National Safety Month, each year, employees are helping to reverse and increase in accidental injuries and deaths in the workplace. And whereas, the city supports safe efforts and has taken proactive stance in providing safe and healthy work environments for its employees by supporting the Be Safe Safety Committee. And whereas, the city works to prevent accidental injuries by educating employees about safe and healthy practices in the workplace through training and encouragement. And whereas, the beginning of the summer season, traditionally a time of increased accidents and injuries, is an appropriate time to focus attention on risk management and prevention. Now therefore be it resolved, I Bud Starker, Mayor, and the City Council of Wheat Ridge formally designate the month of June 2021 as Wheat Ridge Safety Month, and urge all community members to establish and maintain safe practices in their homes, workplaces, and throughout the community. Witness whereof in this 24th day of May 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. So I will turn it over to Ally, Ally Scheck.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And thank you. As an organization, we are very committed to good safety and risk management practices. And I think you know this, but I just want to reiterate that the city has an exceptional safety committee. It's led by Amber Garrett, who couldn't join us this evening, but I do want to give a big shout out to Amber. She has really reinvigorated this this amazing committee. The committee is comprised of employees from all over the city. And they're they're just really dedicated to to doing the work, to doing the really important work for our for our residents and for our employees. They meet quarterly, they review incident history, and look at ways to look at really mitigating, developing mitigation strategies. And in fact, on Friday, we did our virtual awards and we recognized an employee in the Parks and Rec Department, Steve Labor, who did some real innovative work around safety in our parks. So this is really important to us. In 2020, we received exceptional ratings from both Sasa and Pinnacle Assurance, our two of our insurers. And those exceptional ratings lead to saving valuable resources for the city through much lower premiums. So the work we do, it works. It really does work. So I just wanted to say a huge thanks to the Safety Committee and to Amber and to all of our employees who work tirelessly towards a safe culture here in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ally, for for bringing this to us. And you know, I'm really, it's really great to hear that the city focuses on safety because every every employee deserves to be able to go to work and and come back in a safe and whole condition. So and it's really focusing and being aware of the things that happen. I was in the construction business, a lot of a lot of opportunities for accidents and just having it on on mind and having people thinking about it and working for it is very important. So thank you for the work you do on that behalf.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, our our fourth proclamation is in support of LGBTQ+ Pride Month in June 2021. And I'm pleased to welcome Sarah Robbins and Chris Miller onto the onto the screen. There's Sarah. Sarah, thank you for joining us this evening. And there's Chris Miller. Chris, thanks for being here. Whereas the City of Wheat Ridge cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas, all are welcome in the City of Wheat Ridge to live, work, play, and every family deserves a place to call home, where they can feel safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas, the city denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital marital status, national orientation, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas, Pride Month began on June 28th, 1969, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after LGBTQ+ and allied friends rose up and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, we appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus, community which strengthen our social welfare. And whereas, it is imperative that every person in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feels valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas, despite being marginalized, LGBTQ+ people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, declare the month of June 21, 2021, as LGBTQ Pride Month, and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community, and actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Witness on this 24th day of May 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. Mr. Miller and and Ms. Robbins, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the council for acknowledging that Wheat Ridge is a diverse and inclusive place to live, work, and play. I might be, I'm not sure, but I just might be the first openly gay elected official here in Wheat Ridge, but I certainly hope that I'm not the last. When I first moved to Wheat Ridge, I didn't think that it would be possible for someone like me to serve an elected position because I just didn't think I could get elected, to be honest. But times have changed and it means a lot to me that you've made this proclamation. And it also means a lot, I think, to the young people in our community that then that they know that not only do their families, but also their government and the community in which they live supports them and that they matter. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Robbins? Okay, thank you very. Did you wish to say anything, Ms. Robbins, or we'll just continue on? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us tonight. And that will that will conclude our four proclamations for tonight. And I'm going to turn the page and ask for approval of the minutes. And councillors, in your packet, you have the study session notes of May 3, 2021, City Council minutes of May 10, 2021, special study session notes of May 10, 2021, and study session notes of May 17, 2021. Are there any corrections to be noted to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will let the minutes stand as presented with our thanks to the clerk for a great job once again. We are at the approval of the agenda. If I hear no objections, we will let the agenda stand as presented. Seeing none, we will let the agenda stand as presented. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. This is the opportunity for citizens to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. You may you may speak by going, let us know that you'd like to speak by going, raising your hand in the in the raise hand function, which is located at the bottom of the screen in the, I believe in the participant section of our of the Zoom format. And so if you would raise your hand, I will, we will bring you into the meeting and you'll have three minutes to address the council. And if you're on the telephone, we will provide an opportunity for you to unmute and join us in our meeting. So is, do we see anyone with their hand raised in the Zoom format wishing to speak, Ms. Scheck?
No, Mayor, and I've unmuted the caller if they'd like to speak.
Okay. If there you were, this is an opportunity to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. We will, we have several public hearings that we will have public comment on each item as they come up. But this is an opportunity to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Once again, is there anyone wishing to speak tonight at citizens' right to speak?
I'm unclear if I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
I'm on the phone. Okay. And I may have been confused about agenda items. I I wanted to propose a question to council about the noise ordinance. And I'm sorry, I'm kind of out of order here. My name is Laura Jenkins. My address is 9715 West 43rd Avenue here in Wheat Ridge.
Okay. And thank you very much. And that is not on our, let's see, not on our agenda tonight, is it?
Mr. Mayor, that is actually number three on our agenda tonight on second hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I over overlooked that. So to our speaker, we on the telephone, we will have public comment on agenda item number three when that comes up. So if you would just hold on, take your comments on that at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else? Okay, we will close our citizens' right to speak and we will go to, we have nothing on our consent agenda, consent agenda tonight. So we will go into public hearings and ordinances on second reading with agenda item number one. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 06-2021 in ordinance, reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall and approving Presiding Municipal Judge Services Agreement. The issue the city's Home Rule Charter provides for appointment of the municipal court judge for a term of two years. The current term of Presiding Judge Christopher Randall expires June 30th, 2021.
Thank you. This is a an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not, it is not quasi judicial. Pardon me, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff, pardon me, presentation on this item?
Oh, we do have Chris Randall, our Municipal Judge on the on the line. And I think he has a few things to say.
Okay, Judge Randall.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council and Ally and Patrick. You know, not much more to add than what we talked about at the study session. I do want to thank Ally and Patrick and Mr. Doll for their court support. And the I'll tell you, the last couple of years have been two interesting years for court as far as COVID. You know, we're a public facing department. So been challenging to operate court. And then state legislation has made operating a municipal court difficult. But you folks have, you know, gave you a packet, cover letter and memo, probably covered way too much than you wanted to know in there. But looking forward to two more years. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Judge. Before we open it up to questions from council, I would like to open it up to questions from the public. If you would like to speak on this agenda item number one from the public, now is your opportunity. If you would raise your hand in the Zoom format, or if you're on the telephone, unmute yourself, we'll bring you into the meeting. And when we do, if you'd give us your first name and your last name, spell your last name and give us your address, then you'll have an opportunity to speak on this issue. Is there anyone wishing to speak from the public on agenda item number one?
I know one with their hand up, Mayor. Yep.
Okay, we will, we will close the citizens' comment portion and go to questions from council. Are there any questions from council on this item before we move to a motion? Seeing none, Ms. Hutchinson, may I have a motion on agenda item number one?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill number 06-2021 in ordinance, reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall and
Excuse me, Ms. Hutchinson, let me close the public hearing. And now, now if you would please go ahead with your with your motion. I apologize.
Good. I move to approve Council Bill number 06-2021 in ordinance, reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall and approving a Presiding Municipal Judge Services Agreement on second reading and that it take effect upon adoption.
Second.
Second.
We have, we have a second by Mr. Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Weaver.
Just wanted to thank Judge Randall. He's just been amazing. And I have learned so much from his leadership in the time that I've been involved with Wheat Ridge. And I just wanted to thank you and this. And he is the one person who touches all aspects, it seems, of Wheat Ridge. So thank you for your guidance on so many issues. Just really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Ms. Weaver's comments. I, many of you know the story, but one of my first interactions with the city was having to go to animal court because my dogs got out of my yard and one of my dogs bit the neighbor's dog. And I was the very last case that you you handled that day. So I got to sit through an entire half day of of animal court in Wheat Ridge. And and I will tell anybody that is the best orientation to who we are as a city. But it was also my orientation to how our city operates. I witnessed that day, just a very thoughtful treatment of each case and, you know, recognizing what a unique community we live in. You know, I didn't really understand at the time, but have thought back many times since then, that it really was a great introduction to what a great city this is. And so, Mr. Randall, you were my first exposure to to Wheat Ridge's uniqueness, but also its greatness. So I'm glad you're sticking with us for a few more years and hopefully I don't have to come back in front of you anymore. But you handled it very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and putting it so the clerk can see it. And would the clerk please count the votes and report?
Mr. Mayor, the motion just passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number two. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number 05-2021 in ordinance prohibiting deadly weapons on city property and making other amendments consistent with state weapons laws. At issue, a growing concern exists today with the increase in gun and deadly weapon violence throughout the United States. These acts of violence contribute to increased personal safety concerns for visitors and guests at city-owned properties and for employees of the city. City-owned buildings and properties should be considered safe, available, and open. The lack of deadly weapons in those settings contributes to a sense of safety for visitors, guests, elected officials, and employees. Section 16-81 and 17-53 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws currently addresses weapons, but does not prohibit the possession of deadly weapons on city-owned property.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, very briefly. But I will open it up to Mr. Doll, too, in case he has anything to say. But I won't, I won't repeat what Councilmember Stites just said. But our, as he mentioned, our code does not, it does address weapons, but it doesn't address or doesn't prohibit the possession of deadly weapons on city-owned property. And that is something that we do recommend. State law does allow municipalities to to regulate possession of certain firearms and deadly weapons in specific settings. Many of our neighbors have done that, done so, Lakewood, Arvada, Golden, Denver, and Jefferson County, and many communities across the state have have done that. What Colorado law does not allow is for the city of Wheat Ridge to prohibit individuals who carry concealed firearms and who possess a concealed carry permit. So just to be clear on that, we're not recommending that. We don't have that authority unless we provide for security at municipal buildings, security officers, and magnetometers at entrances to municipal, minibus, municipal buildings, excuse me. But we are not recommending to do anything with concealed weapons. This is just to prohibit any deadly weapons in on municipal property. Our city code is also out of out of sync or out of date with state state codes. So this ordinance will align city code with state law concealed carry. It will align the city code with the state law definition of deadly weapon and will also prohibit the carry of deadly weapon upon city-owned property. Mr. Doll, do you have anything to add to that?
I would want to just emphasize the point that Patrick made about persons with concealed carry permits and the state preemption of the city's regulation of that, unless there are the electronic weapons detector mechanisms. And that is found at subsections D and E of the new section 16-89. And so both of those sections basically carry forward the requirements of state law, the concealed weapon carry as a matter of statewide concern. Cities may not regulate or prohibit unless they install the equipment, which letter E talks about, and which, as you're aware, we do have for persons entering the municipal court. That's all.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public for for public comment on this agenda item number two. If you would like to comment on this on this item, now is your opportunity. If you would please unmute yourself in the in the telephone or or raise your hand in the in Zoom format, we'll bring you into the meeting. And when you do, please give us your first name, last name, spell your last name, and give us your address. Is there anyone with their hand up, Ms. Scheck?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'll give it just a couple more seconds. If now is your opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Okay, I don't see anyone wishing to speak. So we'll close our public comment section on this item and go to questions from council. If you have a question, raise your hand, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Doll, can you please, I had a question about being in the middle of the street with an open carry firearm. And so can you please explain how this does not address that? And so can you please explain how this does not address that?
Well, if if it's if it's open, if it's open carry, you're not allowed to bring open carry on to city property. Are you talking about, pardon me, a open carry in a vehicle?
Talking about walking down your, walking down your street.
The the definition for for the areas in which open carry is not permitted is is city property, meaning all buildings, somebody's real property and portions thereof owned by the city. And the city owns the streets. And so the streets would be part of city property upon which open carry would not be permitted.
Mr. Dahl, maybe I could add to this. We we had Carmen Berry with your office provide some more detail on this and she spent some time looking at this. And in in private vehicles, people are allowed to possess firearms legally and and transport those. So on on the street, in that sense, yes, they are allowed. On foot, it's Ms. Berry's opinion that it's practically difficult to provide the legally required posting notices on all public entrances of all streets, which this ordinance does require that we at public buildings and public properties, we must post that open carry is not allowed. But we do have several other sections of our code, Ms. Hoppy, that do prohibit. You can't have a free all, free for all on open upon streets. We have a code section that makes it illegal to brandish or threaten with an open weapon. If you're walking on down the street, you cannot discharge fire on firearms from or across public streets in the city. So in that sense, yes, it would be illegal on public streets, but you can transport them in private vehicles.
Thank you.
Okay, additional questions on this item of Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On section four E, it mentions installation of metal detectors and obviously there's there's metal detectors currently installed, but they may not be operating. So as it relates to the language in four E, can we say that they're turned on and operating or what is the definition of installed?
I'm comfortable with the language as as written to allow the city to have the metal detectors in place. And I'm thinking of the courtroom, for example. Metal detectors are in place and they're they're turned on and then and staffed when the court's in session. They're they're not turned on, the court isn't in session, but but that room isn't being used. So I'm I'm comfortable with the language of permanently installed being the equipment's there and it's turned on and off at as needed. And that would be true if the city chose to impose that constraint upon other city buildings.
So if someone had a concealed carry permit and they entered council chambers for a council meeting, even though the metal detectors are installed there, they're not operating, so they would still be able to conceal carry in that case?
That's that's correct. Those metal detectors, while they're they're present, are not staffed for council meetings and so effectively, like I take the point of your question, effectively, there is not a screening protocol or regimen presently for council meetings.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Additional questions from counsel? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I've been reading through this and I I don't, I really understand how the four E preamps anything that's in section sixteen dash eighty three because it kind of makes it seem like we're talking about how you can't carry concealed deadly weapons even even conce- so even concealed. And then we go on to later say that because you have a permit, you're exempted. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, I mean, subsection D is written with the intention that while the rest of the structure of the whole ordinance simply talks about deadly weapons, subsection D of sixteen eighty nine carves out of that set of regulations, the persons carrying concealed deadly weapon with a valid concealed carry permit. So it's a it's a rule with an exception. The exception being designed to address persons with valid concealed carry permits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions on this item before we move to a motion? Okay, seeing done, I'm going to close the public hearing and Mr. Stites, would you please give us a motion on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number zero five dash twenty twenty one and ordinance prohibiting deadly weapons on city property and making other amendments consistent with the state weapons laws on second reading and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
And Mr. Urban's second sent motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none discussions, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please account the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to agenda item number three. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill number zero seven dash twenty twenty one and ordinance amending section sixteen dash one zero three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning regulation of noise. At issue, City Council approved ordinance sixteen ninety seven on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty and ordinance amending section sixteen dash one zero three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of noise. The ordinance, among other things, established a permit process which allows up to six outdoor amplified sound events for the same location in a twelve-month period. Consensus was reached by City Council on April fifth, twenty twenty one study session to amend the ordinance to increase the number of individual permitted sound events from six to eight in a calendar year and to create a special permit process for all sound events over eight in a calendar year and make other clarifying amendments as described in the prior action section of the staff report.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not it is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do you have a staff presentation on this item?
We do a brief one again and and Mr. Dahl and I will, assuming tag team this maybe a little bit, we worked on this together, but again, I won't repeat what Councilmember Nosler Beck said, but this ordinance will provide the following changes to to the ordinance that was approved in August of last year. As Councilmember Nosler Beck mentioned, it will increase the number of individual outdoor amplified sound event permits from six to eight in a calendar year. Then also we're changing that from a a rolling twelve-month period to a twelve-month calendar year. It creates a special use permit process for all outdoor amplified sound events over eight in a calendar year. It removes the requirement for businesses to notify residents and businesses within a three hundred-foot radius of permitted sound events. It changes the definition of unreasonable noise and adds a new definition of unavoidable noise. It strikes the words prima facie, facia in section sixteen one oh three B. It adds language to allow the city to revoke a business license for failure to comply with this ordinance. In the definition of amplified sound, it changes the distance to measure audible noise from fifty feet to a hundred feet. Staff is proposing to increase it to two hundred feet and also increase the measurement of mobile noise from fifty feet to a hundred feet. It creates a section, the ordinance, to allow businesses applying for outdoor amplified sound events to transition for the requirements of the current ordinance to the new proposed ordinance. And it amends section sixteen one oh three D to clarify that amplified sound permits are for outdoor events. With that, Mr. Dahl, did I miss anything?
No, you you didn't. I'm sure there'd be questions and we can catch them now.
Okay, after the public. Questions from from counsel, I would like to open this up to the public for questions or not for questions, for comments on this agenda item number three. If you are joining us from the public and would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. If you would raise your hand in the Zoom format. If you're on the telephone, and I know we have one speaker on the telephone that would like to speak on this. If you would unmute yourself and ask to speak, we'll bring you into the meeting. When you do, please give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name and give us your address for the record, then you'll be able to speak after that. And I see our caller is is here and I would like to bring our telephone caller into the meeting.
Sorry, Laura Jenkins, J E N K I N S. And my address is nine seven one five West Forty Third Avenue. So I read the agenda packet and I appreciate the council's work in in amending the ordinance from six to eight. I think that's great for businesses. I live near one of those businesses. But I have a concern about the vagueness of the special use permit. And I I believe that it needs some more thought. My question becomes this. So if a facility decides they want to have more than eight events, they go to, as I understand it, Mr. Goff for event number nine and he can approve or not approve. But at that same time, let's say they have a a big plan and decide they want to have events ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. There's nothing in the current ordinance that says he's only going to consider one event at a time versus multiple events. And then working on that point, at some point, I think the council has to consider the total number of special use permits that someone would be allowed to get in a year because we're coming up on the, as the mayor said, the beautiful weather, we're all out gardening and, you know, basically Colorado from June to October is wonderful. So let's say a business decides to go and apply for a special use permit for every Saturday and Sunday from June to October. That's forty events. So someone who lives near Clancy's might have to have forty events all summer or all the nice weather, you know, for the rest of the year. And in my opinion, that doesn't make them a restaurant anymore. That makes them a concert venue. And I think that's a totally other thing that the city council needs to consider. If we're going to become a a city that has a Red Rocks or a Denver Botanic Gardens, I think we need to have more thought applied to this. So that's my question slash opinion. I think the special use permit information as it stands is very vague and doesn't serve the city well.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I I can speak to that now if we'd like, Mr. Mayor. The way the way the SUP special use permit process was was created and set up and the intent of it is once once a business applies for a special use permit, it's 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 valid until it's it's taken away or repealed by the city or the business closes or leaves. They don't have to apply for event nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen all separately. If if a business knows they need more than eight outdoor sound events in a year, they apply for an SUP or a special permit and and it can be approved. And through that process, it can be approved and and it can be approved with different restrictions depending on the location of the business. So as an example of Clancy's, if if we as a city don't think that they should have an unlimited number of outdoor events in a year, that can be part of the special use permit. We could say they can have, they can only have twenty or they can only have one a weekend or whatever. That's that's the beauty of the special use permit process. It can be very unique and individualized for the business and its location. So I think that addresses the caller's questions and Mr. Dahl's got some input on that too.
Thank you. If I might add, Mr. Mayor, the at the bottom of page four and top of page five of the ordinance are really the the conditions and standards for evaluating standards for evaluating a permit application for more than eight and the conditions that can be imposed. And and I I want to emphasize that there really are standards that would be available to address problems that arise as a result of activities or events that have been permitted. You'll notice that the the city manager looks at proximity of the event to residential neighborhoods, medical facilities and schools. Significantly, the city manager can look to the applicant's history of past compliance with the section. So issues that have been had with that location on previous permits or frankly, in previous events involving involving noise. And letter C up at the top is hardship to the applicant or the community. So there's a balancing test that is required to be made by the manager. Not a fun job, but an important one. And I guess the point I'd make would be that there are there are standards that the city manager is required to look at and the city manager can grant or deny the permit in whole or in part, meaning someone could apply for for twelve events, city manager could say, I'm going to approve nine events. That's approving it in part. And of those nine events, I'm going to impose the following time restrictions. All specific to the needs of that particular neighborhood and the specific issues that were raised around that particular permit, as well as council knows, there's an appeal of the manager's decision available to the city council. So I think it's a really a more involved process than than it would appear on on first reading.
Okay, thank you very much and we we appreciate that caller. And do we have any other members of the public? We are now into public comment under agenda item number three. If are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this? You may raise your hand in the in the Zoom format and I'll go to Ms. Scheck to see if we have anyone with their hands raised, hand raised.
Mayor, we do. We have Aaron McAllister.
Okay, Aaron McAllister, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for revisiting this issue. I just want to kind of touch base over a couple of issues to.
Would you give us your, we've got the spelling on your name.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My last name, McAllister, M C C A L L I S T E R. The address is nine seven zero one West Forty Fourth Avenue in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. It's the the location of the T-Bird Roadhouse.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. So I just wanted to kind of touch base over the some of the articles that I've actually submitted to my district's city council members, which outlines a video that I actually took last year of a live noise event that we were hosting at T-Bird where it is down, I believe it's Ivy Street right there, where it's recording the decimal levels along with recording the surroundings. And I just want to make that known that one of the neighbors on that street were actually on the phone with the Wheat Ridge Police Department while that event was going on and the, at the time, the decimals were only fifty fifty decimals, which is, you know, if you look at any decimal graph, it's actually quieter than, you know, us talking right now. It's actually quieter than the street. So I think some of the concerns that the neighbors have in the area is that they can hear the the sound. But I feel as though that's inevitable with any sound that you're going to hear in the city. I mean, I, you know, we're on Forty Fourth and, you know, at some points I can hear the highway, which is probably about a half mile away. I can hear, you know, a lot of noise in the the area and also all the all the the events we had last year, we fully complied with the seventy-five decimals that was already in place. And I believe the the, you know, the police reports would show that. We could also look at the survey that the city conducted over the last month and a half. Now, I know that's not scientifically proven, but, you know, vast majority, I think it was forty-six percent of the the residents within Wheat Ridge are opposed to a permit process altogether. And then another, I think it was like fifteen to twenty percent thought that thirteen to twenty-six permits was fair. So I mean, right there alone, you have between sixty and sixty-five percent of Wheat Ridge, not only businesses, but also residents that, you know, want a substantial increase in, you know, the ability to listen to live music at venues across the city. And that doesn't just include T-Bird Roadhouse or Clancy's. It could also include, you know, any other establishment or a residence that wants to host a birthday party during the week. That that's been an issue that has came up to me that I've talked to some of the residences. You know, someone wants to host a Friday night birthday party at their house. At this point, with the current permit process, that that is not available to them or. Or, you know, the way the the ordinance reads, I mean, you can't really even have any sort of amplified sound outside of your house without a permit. And I think that's that's something that should be addressed, and I think it's a concern that that residents should should know about. I don't I don't feel as though a lot of residents are aware of how in-depth this this ordinance takes it. And I just feel like there needs to be a little bit more discussion on this than just tonight and going with the eight permits. So I I thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. On your, we're on agenda item number three, and we're under public comment on this item. If you would like to speak and you're a member of the public, now is your opportunity. Please raise your hand in the Zoom format or unmute yourself on the telephone, and we'll bring you into the meeting. Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to give it a give it another few more seconds because I want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to speak on this item. So once again, if you'd like to speak on this agenda item number three, which is revisions to the noise ordinance, now is your opportunity. If you'd raise your hand in the Zoom format or or if you're on the telephone, please unmute, and and we'll bring you into the meeting. Okay, Ms. Scheck, one more time, anyone with their hands raised or anyone out there in the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to close our public comment on this, and I will go to questions from council. Ms. Weaver.
I just want to address some of the things that just came up with some of the callers that mentioned things. If I want to have a party at my house and I want to hire a band, it's pretty common, I think, to have to get a permit for such a thing, at least that's been my experience. Is is that the case? And because if if I didn't and the noise got too loud, my neighbors could call and and the police would come and I would get shut down. Is that, am I getting that through that correctly? That that's unless I I apply for a permit that I'm going to have amplify either a band or amplified music? Am I missing anything about that? I I feel like that's pretty standard in other cities as well.
Yeah, you're correct, Councilmember Weaver, in in Wheat Ridge anyway. Under this ordinance, you, as a as a resident, if you want to have a backyard barbecue with a with a band outdoors, you could apply for a a single permit. You wouldn't have to go through that, the SUP, this special use permit process, unless you're going to be doing it more than eight times a year.
Right, right.
You're just going to have a summer barbecue with a band? Yeah, you just get a permit that, which is fairly simple process. And yes.
And I could do that if I wanted to have up to eight birthdays in a year. I could do that up to eight times before I would use need a special use permit.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
Ms. Hoppy.
Uh. Patrick, can you please, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick, can you please tell us what the the cost is for a permit and how long it takes to process that?
There is no cost to the permits, and, you know, we haven't. Are you, you're talking about the individual permits or the special use permit? The individual permit process, maybe the city clerk's office, Steve Kirkpatrick could speak to that. He's been managing that process, and he and it has to be reviewed by the police department, and then it comes to our city clerk, and he issues the permit. So I don't know what the timeframe has been.
Within forty-eight to seventy-two hours, business hours. Typically, the applicants send us their application for the permit weeks, even months before. Mr. McAllister, who just spoke, submitted one just today for an event in July, in late July. So we are getting those permits out as soon as PD approves them, and that usually is very quickly. The only cost associated with it is the time it takes to answer the email and create the permit. There is no other expense involved. I hope that answered your questions.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was brought up by at least one of the callers that the word venue and it relates to sort of an outdoor music venue. And as I was looking at the zoning code, it didn't appear that we have a a clear definition of what an outdoor music venue would look like. And the closest thing I can come up with is outdoor amusement facility. And that's the closest thing I come up with, and and then like a commercial one, Zon District, that requires a special use permit in that instance. And I think that if someone had more than eight events, that would sort of, you know, itself classify itself as a music venue. And I really think we should have a definition in our zoning code as to what that looks like because I think that's a different animal as it relates to having a restaurant next door as opposed to having an outdoor music venue. So that that may be a different discussion we can have to tweak that part of the zoning code. But I think we've spent enough time talking and discussing the noise ordinance as it stands, and we can move forward with what we have and tweak things as they come up.
Thank you. Ms. Holteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. One of the things that's in this memo that differed a little bit from last time we talked about it was staff's recommendations to extend, sorry, I got to look at this specific language here, to extend the distance to measurable audible noise from fifty to a hundred feet, which we had discussed. Staff is proposing to increase it to two hundred feet and also increase the measurement for mobile noise from fifty to a hundred feet. And I'm just curious if there's any reason why staff is is giving us that proposal.
Sure, thanks, Councilmember Holteen. And and through discussions with the police department and kind of thinking about the practicality of of measurements and and those actual distances, we didn't feel those were were adequate or appropriate. And so maybe I'll let Chief Murth or Division Chief Lorenz speak to that if they wouldn't minds.
Yep, sure, Patrick, thank you. I would just suggest that when we originally looked at the fifty feet, that was basically the next adjoining house. And we really wanted to be able to say that, you know, if we're in the spirit of this law, if somebody was outside and and they were an unpermitted, if they were a low-level noise, I guess, making a low-level noise, we wanted it to be reasonable to say, you know, if somebody just lived next door and heard it, that we didn't have to enforce that. But really, two hundred feet is not that, is not very far, maybe two, two to three properties away. And we felt that officers enforcing that were in a difficult spot before when they were challenged to say, you know, any noise was prima facie evidence of a violation. We didn't want to get back there, and we thought that a reasonable distance to us is somebody that can hear it from two or three houses away before they need a permit. It was really what it boiled down to was our own experiences. I don't know if Chief Lorenz has anything to add to that, but that's where we came up with with sort of what we thought when we're out there mediating between of maybe a business and a residence, what what we could successfully mediate out there. Jim, did you have anything to add?
All right. Thank you, that is helpful. My second, I guess, sort of question comment. Ms. Jenkins' concerns about the special use permit. I'm wondering, so the the application for the special use permit, would an applicant be required to put forth things like anticipated number of music events or amplified events, times, duration, those type of things that, I mean, let me back up a little bit. One of the things that I like about the special use permit process is it does require the neighborhood meeting. And so I guess I'm just curious if if at that meeting, the proposed, I guess, constraints or restrictions that or use of that permit would be in discussions that then the city manager or appropriate staff would be using their discretion on what they would be approving and not approving.
Yeah, Councilmember Holteen, I I believe there would need to be some detail on what the plans of the business are going to be. I don't think it has to be concrete and stone, but it's going to be very difficult for the neighborhood to understand and support or not support, or myself to figure out if they just say they want to have more than eight events, but they're going to have a hundred as opposed to twenty, right? I think that's going to have different impacts to a neighborhood. So I think the more information that an applicant provides in their in their their application, it's the easier it's going to be able to come up with a a plan for that business and that neighborhood.
So so let's say Business X moves forward with a special use permit, and it has, you know, these restrictions that are agreed upon between the city and the neighbors and the applicant. And then what happens if they're in violation of those?
I think there's a section, I think we put an actual language in here, didn't we, Mr. Doll? Enforcement, the city may cancel, revoke, suspend. Or, well, we did add a new section where they can lose their business license if they continuously violate their special use permit.
It's also true at the top of page six, the police department has the authority to require the permit to reduce the sound volume, curtail the hours, close the event entirely if the sound is becomes unreasonable. So there's a shutdown the event ability in the police department in the moment, if necessary. And then, as the city manager points out, from a longer-term perspective, okay, you violated the permit, it got shut down that night. Now, what is, what impact might that will have on your business license? That's a longer process. And of course, our business licensing revocation process is a separate one and and provides a lot of due process to the business owner and would take more time. But in the moment, in the night or in the day, police department would have the ability to shut down the event.
And and also, it not quite is going as far as actually taking their business license, but the the permit itself can be revoked. So first, and that's in section three. First, the police department has the discretion to shut the event down or ask them to turn the music down. If they if they continue to not comply with their SUP, we could take the permit away and or their business license if it's, I guess, if it rises to that certain level.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Additional questions before we go to a motion? All right, any other, any other discussion before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Noslerbeck, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number zero seven dash twenty twenty-one in ordinance amending section sixteen dash one zero three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning regulation of noise on second reading, and that it takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
And a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just kind of address one kind of opinion, like, I I opinion out there that we were have rushed this noise ordinance. I just would like to point out that we started this conversation in September of two thousand nineteen. We had another conversation about it on December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, another conversation about it on July twentieth, two thousand twenty, and another one on August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. So and then and then we went to another study session on April fifth, two thousand twenty-one. So we have spent a significant amount of time crafting this. And I I feel as though everyone has been able to come together and come up with a system that is a hybrid system, which is what we initially asked for, and also a system that is not a one-size-fits-all, but can work for the many different uses that we can see in our community, especially with our new corridors being built up at Clear Creek Crossing and the I T O D site. So thank you for, thank you for the time to say that.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands. And would the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move now to agenda item number four. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution removing a memorandum of action-making and historic designation for the Joy Williams Barn, case number W H L dash twenty-one dash zero one. At issue, a historic designation for a wooden barn structure at one one four six zero, now one one four eight zero West Forty Fourth Avenue, was approved by the city council in nineteen ninety-eight pursuant to the city's historic preservation, Article Nine, in chapter twenty-six of the Code of Laws. As required by the code, a memorandum of that designation was recorded with the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder. However, the code does not require that the grantee or grantor of such a designation be listed on the recorded memorandum, and a subsequent purchaser of the property took title without notice of the designation. The owner has requested the designation be removed due to this defect in the original memorandum.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing. It is a quasi-judicial public hearing. I am going to open the public hearing. And if you intend to speak on this item by your speaking on this item, you agree to tell the truth as you know it in this case. Mr. Doll, do we have a staff report on the side?
Yes, we do. I'm I'm the staff report. Council has seen, thank you, council has seen this material in in the packet, and you've got a fair amount of backup material, including the original nineteen ninety-eight memorandum. There's an aerial photograph, a request from the current property owner to remove the designation. I point out that under the city's historic preservation ordinance, only an owner of property may request that a designation be imposed. The city can't unilaterally do so. And owners of property are permitted to request that the designation be removed. And so you have the present owner requesting that that designation be removed, and that's an appropriate request. Council has the power to remove it by either ordinance or resolution, and the mechanism per the code, the mechanism here is a resolution. As was noted in the issue read by Councilmember Dozeman, there was not a requirement for the owner, grantor, or the grantee of the memorandum to be listed and thus recorded in the clerk and recorder's office records. And as many council members know, we have a grantor-grantee land recording system for for deeds and other documents affecting title in Colorado, and the way you track title and determine whether there's any encumbrance on the titles by looking at this grantor-grantee index. And if you, for example, buy property from person A, person A is the grantor, you are the grantee, and that is listed in, and then in future, if you were proposing to buy property, you have a title report run, and the title company looks at their grantor-grantee index to develop the list of exceptions in the title policy that we're all familiar with when you buy property. In this particular case, the memorandum as recorded did not list a grantor or grantee. It did say it was the Joy Williams Barn, but the clerk and recorder understandably doesn't doesn't add to a document. They don't fill in the blanks for you. They record what you have them. And and so there was not a grantor listed or a grantee listed. So for that reason, later purchasers did not have the ability to be aware of this, the current owner took title, I think in two thousand thirteen, without knowing that. And I have asked for and reviewed the title policy that the current owner obtained when she bought the property to determine that, in fact, this memorandum was not listed in the list of exceptions. And so under Colorado's race notice recording statute, I conclude that this purchaser is a good-faith purchaser without notice and takes free of that of that condition. And in order to fully clear title to this property, which is appropriate, if the deed, if the memorandum was ineffective to begin with, I'm supportive of the request that the memorandum, since it's ineffective, be declared so, and we'll record that. And that will fully clear title to the property, as I believe the present owner has the right to ask. I have corresponded with the attorney for the present owner. That attorney is Douglas Brown. I think he's one of the attendees in the meeting. I've informed him of this hearing. And while it is a public hearing, Mr. Mayor would ask that if you could, if you could recognize Mr. Brown to to speak as the basically the applicant's attorney on this matter and as the first speaker and whatever number of public speakers there are. Other than that, I have nothing more to add unless there are council. Other than that, I have nothing more to add unless there are council questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Doll, and I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Brown if you'd like to make make a comment at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I do represent the owner, the company by name, it called It's For The Birds. And Dr. Sandra McIntyre is is one of the principals. We had raised this issue with Mr. Doll in previous correspondence, and I I think he's made a good recitation of of the issues. My client was not aware of this resolution or memorandum at the time she acquired the property and became aware sometime thereafter. It was not picked up in the grantor, grantee index based on on how the the memorandum was prepared and recorded. So we have been corresponding with Mr. Doll and and requested that such designation be removed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open the open the floor up to comments from the public. If you are a member of the public, I would like to speak on this agenda item number four. Now is your opportunity. If you please raise your hand in the Zoom format. Or if you're on the telephone, please unmute yourself and ask to join the meeting and we will bring you into the meeting. Ms. Shek, I will.
Mayor, I've taken over Ms. Shek's duties.
Okay, I was I was looking for her, so I will ask Mr. Goff, is there anyone with their hands raised?
There is not at this moment.
Okay, I'll give it a few more seconds. If you wish to speak on this agenda item number four from the public, now is your opportunity. If you would unmute yourself, we will bring you into the meeting. And I don't see anyone further, so we will close our public comment portion of this agenda item and go to questions from council. If you have a question before we close the public hearing and go to a motion. Okay, I see no questions. We are going to close the public hearing and may I have a motion on this item, Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number twenty eight dash twenty twenty one. A resolution removing a memorandum of action making an historic designation for the Joy Williams Barn.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion?
I think it might have been Mr. Urban.
Oh, it's Mr. Urban. I'm sorry. I was looking at Mr. Stites and he had his hand up there first, I think. It's hard for me to see, but Mr. Urban does have a second tonight, so we're trying to share the share the. Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Better luck next time, Mr. Urban. We will. We will go now to agenda item number five. Ms. Hultein, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and somebody's dog. I'd like to introduce Council Bill number eight, twenty twenty one. An ordinance adopting section sixteen sixty nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrians hindering the flow of traffic. At issue, the ordinance is intended to reduce motorist and pedestrian crashes by prohibiting actions by pedestrians that obstruct or hinder traffic, including pedestrians being physically in traffic lanes or extending objects, hands, et cetera, into traffic lanes.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. Ms. Hultein, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move to approve Council Bill number eight, twenty twenty one. An ordinance adopting section sixteen sixty nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrians hindering the flow of traffic. Order it published, public hearings set for June fourteenth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. As a virtual meeting and in city council chambers. Seven five zero zero West Twenty Ninth Avenue. If allowed to meet in person on that date per COVID nineteen restrictions and that it take effect fifteen days after publication.
And
Second.
Second by Mr. Urban. And so do we have discussion? Do we have discussion on the motion? Actually, we we don't because we're not, this is, all those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will go now to item number six. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number nine dash twenty twenty one. An ordinance adopting section sixteen dash seventy of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrian use of roadway center mediums in connection therewith amending section sixteen dash one thirteen. Sales and solicitations in certain places prohibited.
Would you read what's at issue, please?
Yeah, just once again, let me get back to that. At issue, the ordinance is intended to reduce motorist and pedestrian crashes by regulating center mediums that are unsafe for occupation by pedestrians. The ordinance adopts a new section of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws governing pedestrian and traffic safety and amend the current section on solicitation activities to add a legislative declaration.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. A motion is in order. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number nine dash twenty twenty one. An ordinance adopting section sixteen dash seventy of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning pedestrian use of roadway center mediums in the connection in connection therewith amending section sixteen dash one thirteen sales and solicitations in center in certain places prohibited. Order published set for public hearing on June fourteenth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. As virtual meeting in and in city council chambers, seventy five hundred West Twenty Ninth Avenue. If allowed to meet in person on that date per COVID nineteen restrictions and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Do I have a second? A second by Ms. Hutchinson. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hands and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions. Due to recent resignations, there are vacant seats on the following boards and commissions. Board of Adjustment at Large Position. Term to expire March second, twenty twenty three. Cultural Commission, District One, District Three, and District Four Positions, all terms to expire March second, twenty twenty three. Liquor License Board, District One Position, term to expire March second, twenty twenty one.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hoppy, would you please make the 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 motion for the appointment in District One?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Kathleen Martel to the Cultural Commission, term ending three two twenty three, and Morgan Richards to the Liquor License Authority Board, term ending three two twenty two.
And second by Ms. Hutchinson. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hands and will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, would you please make the motion for District Two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Roger Garmont to Liquor Licensing Authority Board, term ending three two twenty two.
And
And then
I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Let me listen.
Ms. Hultein is a second on. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands. Will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hoppy, would you please make the motion for the at large position for the Board of Adjustment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Todd Hanson to the Board of Adjustment at Large Position, term ending three two twenty three.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Urban. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. That that completes our agenda items for tonight. Let me go to City Manager's Matt. Mr. Golf.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting, I believe, or right before we started. We are off next Monday, so happy Memorial Day weekend, everybody. And we will be back, though, on noon seventh at study session in city council chambers. So right now, the COVID restrictions are are there are none, essentially. A few mask restrictions out there still, and and the good news is the all the indicators of COVID are still heading in the right direction, going down. So we're hoping that we're at the end of of the pandemic potentially. It's still not over, but so the city, we're going to be back to fully open for business again on Tuesday, June first. So customers can come to City Hall. And you can make an appointments also. But you can walk into City Hall to 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 do business with anybody at City Hall at this point. So and our rec center is fully open, no restrictions. Anderson Active Adult Center is back open and we are shooting to have the swimming pool open here on the twenty ninth of May. So hopefully, we're getting somewhat back to normal for the summer. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks so much. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Doll.
Nothing tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will go to our elected officials matters. And let me start with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
And I take a moment to say thank you. Thank you immensely sincerely to every employee of the city who has helped us get through the pandemic, which is apparently ending. We who are here on the screen know how hard they worked and the miracles they performed. But I wanted to make sure that the public knows just how lucky we are to have the staff we do. And I mean, everybody on the staff, not just the executive team. The people who clean our parks and make our roads clear. They are an example of how to do this. They had to reinvent so many of the ways we do business. And they did it in a way that was transparent and easy for the public to follow. Construction continued. Restaurants remained open. Liquor licenses got issued. All the normal business of the city has carried on for these past fifteen months. And now that we're approaching the end of the marathon, I thought it was worth the time to acknowledge their amazing effort and their dedication to their work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Our treasurer, Chris Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend. Be safe and kind to one another. Sometimes I walk down my street to my neighborhood and I see some people that maybe need some help, like mowing some lawns, pulling some weeds, or so forth. Like to encourage everybody to get out, talk to your neighbors, see if they need some help and to remind everybody to be kind to one another. Really looking forward to getting back into council chambers and seeing everyone all in person. And just a reminder, carnation festival's coming August ninth, tenth, and eleventh this year. So actually, no, I'm sorry, that was last year. August thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. So mark calendars. Had a meeting today about it, really getting excited. I think we're going to have a great festival this year.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Nosler Beck.
I just want to echo what Mr. Kirkpatrick said and Mr. Miller said. Just thanks to everybody. It really does feel like we're getting to the end of the marathon. And I want to give a special shout out to Parks and Rec for getting us to a place where the pool is going to be open. My kids are so excited and we have been trying to recruit lifeguards everywhere that we go. So you've probably heard me shout at you at a King Supers if you're, you look like you're of age to be a lifeguard and tried to recruit you. So anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm so excited to see everybody in June.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I if I could jump on that real quick, that that just remind we were, yes, we are still looking for lifeguards. So if anybody's out there, if you know anybody, we're still gonna, our hours are gonna have to be flexed a little bit between the outdoor and the indoor pool just to make them, to keep them both open. So we're still recruiting, so find us more if you can.
Okay.
Mr. Goff, would my senior life saving certificate from nineteen sixty seven still be valid?
Yes, submit an application, Mr. Kirkpatrick. We'll see what we can do.
You gotta tread water with that twenty weight for, I don't know, ten minutes, is it?
We got
When I was instructing lifeguards, it was, they had to drag me from the bottom of the pool. It was no long, it was no twenty pound weight. It was a live human being. And let me tell you, when they took one look at me on day one, they went, oh, no.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank the Wheat Ridge Chamber of Commerce and the city of Wheat Ridge, especially Wheat Ridge Police Department and Parks and Rec for this last Saturday's cleanup area of the I seventy and Kipling area. We had a really great turnout. Target sent ten volunteers from various regional targets. And we had several residents and business owners come out. And we spent a couple hours out there, made quite a stir and and picked up a lot in that area. It's probably still needs a couple more cleanups over the summer, but I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and we had, we had fun. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just echo what everybody else has said and thank the staff and thank everybody for their flexibility and and everything getting through this pandemic. I want to recognize all of our our elementary, middle, and high school students that are are ending school this week, hopefully for Jeffco. I think last day for Jeffco is Thursday, I believe, for for most schools. So just as people are getting out there and and kids are out playing and riding their bikes, be careful as you're driving around. And then this weekend is Memorial Day weekend. So if you've are looking for a barbecue or anything like that, if you can find it, buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stites. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to say the right words. The the neighborhood meetings that are on What's
What's up, Wheat Ridge?
They're they're in Applewood and what's the other neighborhood, Corey? I I don't know if I can
Leepa Manor.
Leepa Manor. If anybody in District Three has questions on what your neighborhood is, I actually had to figure out what neighborhood I was in. There's a map on What's Up Wheat Ridge and those meetings are coming up. I think one happened last week and another one's coming up in the next couple weeks here. So get get engaged, District Three.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Hultein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple things, so I'll try and make them quick. First, I just really want to thank Sarah Robbins and our city treasurer, Chris Miller today. Chris, your comments were just really inspiring and I'm just really proud that you're part of our city and I've enjoyed getting to know you. So secondly, I'm also super proud of District Two, which has two businesses that made Best of Westward. One district, two businesses, King of Wings got best chicken wings, which to me was a no brainer. If you haven't been there, go go get your wing on. And then Stylist and Creed actually got the best new coffee house designation by Best of Best of Westward. So really proud of that in District Two. And then the last thing, you've heard me mention a couple times that Wheat Ridge is in the competition for the All America City Award. And we will be competing on June ninth at eleven twenty in the morning. And I mention it now because we don't have a actual city council meeting again before then. And there are numerous ways for people in our community to watch us compete. It will be something that will be available via Zoom. If you're interested and concerned you don't know how to watch it, reach out to me and I'd be happy to help connect you with a way to do that. We're really excited to be representing our community on a on a national stage and really, you know, proud of of who we are and what we've accomplished. And we're one of twenty cities and we will find out that night if we get one of ten designations. So I expect everyone in the city on June ninth to be walking around with their fingers crossed. And I'm hoping that on the June fourteenth city council meeting, we will have exciting news that we have won the designation. So with that, I look forward to seeing my peers in person early June. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Hutchinson.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, Mr. Goff, correct me if I'm wrong. When we are back in person, the first meeting for June, which is a study session, will be set up in study session format at the tables. The, our, our community will be allowed in chambers without having to make a reservation, right?
We are taking reservations for June 7th.
Yeah, okay. We're taking reservations, and if they cannot be in person, we will still have Zoom avail, Zoom accessibility. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and all of our other What's Up, Channel 8, and YouTube After The Fact. Yep.
And Wheat Ridge Speaks prior.
Wheat Ridge Speaks, yep.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Just to echo the, the thoughts of Mr. Kirkpatrick, I think our staff has done a great job getting us through this pandemic. We, we did, were able to, to continue the work of our city, and I think our city is, is moving in a, in a great direction. I would really appreciate all the, all the work that they've done. I'm excited to, to hopefully be, be out of this pandemic and be back in person, and so we'll look, look how that comes. School is out, so please be careful driving around, and we are at a holiday weekend, so I hope everyone will take an extra measure of, of care and, and safety as we, as we go about the celebration of the men and women who have given their lives in immeasurable service to make us the free nation and the free world that we live in. So, thank you very much to all of the people that have participated in that. I have nothing further. If there's no, no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned, and please have a good Memorial Day. So, thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.